Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting for Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Tonight's meeting is a regular city council meeting, first for November. For the record, all members of council are present and accounted for. And it looks like almost all of our department heads, with the exception of Fire Chief Hobrick, who is ill this evening, and Police Chief Lehman, who is on training. So thank you, everyone, for being here. First item of business is invocation. Do we have someone here this evening to give an invocation? We do. All right, sir. We'd ask that you please approach the microphone. I'd ask the audience, please, to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge allegiance after.
Our most gracious heavenly father, we are grateful this evening for the for the great work that the city council and other department heads are accomplishing. We are grateful for their support. Help us as city and county residents to be supportive of the great efforts that they are doing. We pray for blessing upon our city, upon the youth that are struggling with various challenges. And upon the law enforcement that is seeking the best ways possible to help our youth, to help our older citizens as well. We are grateful for the blessings we enjoy to live in a free country, to be able to vote, to be able to choose our representatives. We're grateful for the blessings that we enjoy in this community in particular, for the bounteous harvests that the house provided for us this year. Please accompany us this evening with thy spirit, that we may always be respectful and choose the right in all things that we do. And as we say, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Item number one. Public comments. Citizens are advised they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Uh, council may refer items to staff to review and or research for presentation at a further meeting, although council members may not comment on public comments at this point. I didn't get the list of names. Mr. Martin, if you'd be so kind. Thank you, sir. All right. First name on my list is Julia Hart. Ms. Hart. Public comment signup sheet is where you are. Well, then I will move you over. Okay, so then the next name on my public comment signup sheet is Zach Heron. Please state your name and city of residence and then make a comment, sir.
Zach Aaron, Yakima County. Also, the president of IFF Local thirty-five forty-two. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council tonight, you're gonna have the proposal of our insurance that we had brought forth a couple of weeks ago, almost a couple of months ago now. I don't know how much of insurance people understand, but it was a pretty fast track for myself. But a little bit about the insurance did start in Washington State. It has since developed all across uh, the country within the International Association of Firefighters. It's built by firefighters for firefighters. Um, in there, it talks a little bit about a high deductible plan, and it's not a hundred percent a high deductible plan because there are still some copays built into that. A couple of things with it, though, where we will be able to get physicals actually brought into the fire station, um, which would make us more compliant with some of our specialty hazmat teams and such. Uh, so we're hoping for an approval with that. Uh, secondly, November thirtieth, six P M. at bridal, we're gonna have our mustache competition. Um, so anybody that wishes to come down and attend that, uh, again, it's gonna be the best and the worst. Uh, the money goes to charity. Uh, they will split that up fifty-fifty. So we have invited, uh, local law enforcement, YSO, fire departments from Yakima down to actually Pullman. Uh, so we'll see what kind of attendance we can get. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And I have no other names on my list. So moving on. Consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes. Minutes is a September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. Minutes of the October two, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, I'm sorry, workshop. Minutes of the October nine, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, and minutes of the October twenty-two, October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. Part B. Payroll vouchers. Approved payroll vouchers numbers one-one-nine-four-zero-two through one-one-nine-four-zero-six and wire transfers as listed for seven hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-nine cents for the period ending October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three. Claim vouchers. Approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-seven, six-seven-four through one-zero-seven, seven-three-eight, and wire transfers as listed for seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents for the period ending on October eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-seven, seven-three-nine through one-zero-seven, seven-eight-six, and wire transfers as listed for two hundred thirty-five thousand, seven, two hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents for the period ending October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three. And approved claim voucher numbers one-zero-seven, seven-eight-seven through one-zero-seven, eight-two-four, and wire transfers as listed for seventy-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents for the period ending on November one, twenty-twenty-three. Council members, is there any item that you would like to pull for discussion? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the consent agenda. One second.
All right, motion by Council Beeler and second by Council Hicks to approve the consent agenda as presented. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion carries. Active agenda. First item on our agenda is the twenty-twenty-four preliminary budget public hearing. For that, I will read an introduction. This public hearing is being held to receive public comments and recommendations concerning the two thousand twenty-four preliminary budget. Appearance of fairness disclosures. The concern is that this hearing be fair in form and substance as well as appearance. Council members, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members. Is there anyone in the audience who objects to my participation or any other council member's participation in these proceedings? If there are objections, please approach the microphone, state your name and city of residence and your objection. The time is now seven-thirty, six-thirty-eight. This hearing is now open. Madam City Manager, staff report.
I will turn this, excuse me. I will turn this over to Ms. Horner for staff report.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, we have, are presenting for you the updated preliminary budget ordinance for fund year twenty-twenty-four. Um, this encompasses all programs provided by the city, both in the general fund, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds um, for the entire operating year of twenty-twenty-four. Um, not a ton has changed since the last time it was presented to you. It's been refined a little bit. The main substantive change is the creation of Fund Number One Seventy, which will be our development fund that will handle those, um, revolving loans that were approved by council at a couple of meetings ago, and will also handle, um, some of the ARPA abatement money that you guys allowed for community development. Um, it'll hold that money in that fund so that 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 money cannot be used for any other items. So as we get loan repayments, it'll stay in that fund so we can give new loans out or grants. And same with the abatement. As we abate, um, code enforcement issues, we'll, we will put a lien on that property, bring that money back into the account, and then we'll be able to continue using that to, um, abate other things throughout the future. So that just holds onto that money for us. Um, otherwise, the numbers are very similar to what they were most recently presented to you. Um, the total revenues for, for the proposed budget are forty-six million, nine hundred and two thousand and one hundred and thirty dollars. And the total, uh, budgeted expenditures are forty-seven million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand and ten dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Audience members, I've got two people signed up, uh, to speak, and the first person is Sis Canard. Please state your name in the microphone for the record and make a comment.
Thank you. I'm Sis Canard from Sunnyside. And I am the president of the Sunnyside Historical Museum. And sometimes when I'm looking at this budget, I have a hard time knowing what's exactly allotted for the museum. So as I plan, uh, for the next couple of years for the museum, I kind of need to have some input as to, uh, what funds are available. Um, our building needs some desperate help. If you have been by there recently, we have a, an attic that is caving in. We have pillars at the front, front door and the side that need to have some attention. And, um, we really need to know survey-wise where we're at so that we can make a plan for the future. So I'm not sure exactly where we go to get this information, um, but I, I need some direction. Uh, I am a member of the Park and Recreation Commission, and, uh, I look to them often for direction from the city. Um, but even just the other day, I tried to get direction for who to contact about the keys for the building. And as I tried to email, uh, Annette, uh, Laura, I believe, I even used the staff, um, directory that was on the city and my email came back. So, um, I'm just really struggling. Uh, we have a meeting on November nineteen, uh, November sixteenth, and we're gonna make some, uh, you know, some big decisions for the museum. And if I could just go to them with knowing what we can do, we are seriously looking at, um, some serious renovation of our displays, which may involve, in fact, um, removing some display things that are actually kind of what you might consider permanent displays, but to really make room for uh, a more progressive kind of approach to the displays. Um, so before I start knocking down walls and, um, stuff like that, I really need to know, uh, wh- what funds are available, what I can expect, and, uh, who I should go to. So thank you very much for your attention. And, um, I, I'm so excited about what we're gonna do with the museum, but you do need to know that I plan on having the museum closed for two years, maybe a little less if we can get some work done, but I'm gonna make a big banner that says we are under renovation. Thank you.
And if I may, Mayor, I can-
Yes, you may, Madam Mayor.
So, um, I would like to go ahead and address your concerns right now, because I think it's better that you have the tools available to you before you get to your next meeting. Um, Jameson Horner is who you would talk to about getting your financial, um, information from the city. She can set up a meeting with you and go through your budget section. It's, museum has its own budget section. So we would be able to provide you with the line items and explain to you what's in there. And then for any capital projects, she also would be able to see where we have, um, scheduled that roof reconstruction. It's been in the schedule for several years and never been acted on. Rawl and I have actually had a meeting with HLA recently and told them that this was a priority. We needed to start working on getting somewhere with that. Um, so as far as construction or any modification of the building, that would be Rawl Sanchez. And so I would, um, be great to have a meeting between Jamie Rawl, myself, while I'll sit down with you and be at your disposal and ask us as many questions as you want. And we'll give you all the documents you need to, to make decisions. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Next name on my list is Julia Hart.
Stumble over here. Julia Hart, Sunnyside. Um, tonight I just wanted to, to comment on having worked on seven, uh, city budgets, you know, for the past seven years or so that I was, um, have been, um, served on the council. I gotta say, this one was the easiest one to read. It made the most sense to me. I went through each page to see where our accomplishments were, what our forecast is for going forward. And I gotta say, it looks like it's gonna be a really good budget. Um, and I'm, I'm excited to see going forward how we will, um, with the new people that you're gonna hire, how, hire, we're gonna hire, I think it's really gonna help a lot of folks to get more work done, and I'm very excited about this budget. So I just wanted kudos to everybody who worked on it. I know it was difficult and hard. It's always hard to put budgets together. They're sort of a work in action. But beautiful job. Great on the, uh, explaining to me everything, and I love the glossary. So I could refer back to that. Oh, yeah, what does REIT stand for, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you very much. Good job.
All right, thank you. Hey, nobody's raising their hand or busting up to get to the microphone, so I'm assuming there's no more audience comments. All right, council members. Any questions or comments on this item from council? Mr. Beeler.
Um, the money that you're gonna now put into One Seventy Development Fund, where was that money put before?
It was originally still sitting in the general fund, um, with the bulk of our ARPA that's been unspent.
And nothing else other than general fund, just me?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, um, up until we actually spend those funds as we're spending them, in particular for maybe a water or sewer project, we've just been holding on to it in the general fund until we move it to wherever it needs to go.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
I, I have a, a, a question. Um, I am not a CPA, but I did not see any place in there where we differentiated the ARPA funds. I, I would like to know where we're at with those, how much we've spent, how much we have left, and what we have left, what is it earmarked for?
Jameson, you have a-
Yeah, I, um, I am working on getting a really nice update for you. I do not have it available for you tonight, but I will have it for you at the next meeting. Um, and I do want to advise, there was a new interim rule passed by the federal, um, the feds, uh, clarifying what an obligation means for these ARPA funds. So we've been told for years that the funds have to be obligated by the end of twenty-twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty-twenty-six. Um, and they're, they sort of redefine the word obligates. So we, instead of just saying what we're gonna do with it, we really need to have things ordered or, um, contracts in place. So it's gonna push us to get through that a little bit faster this year than I think, um, initially we were hoping to. So I'm working on getting that, um, that plan for you guys as quick, as quickly as I can.
So then ARPA funds are actually in the budget now. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, are we hiring any employees or any of the ARPA funds being used for wages for our employees?
The council approved, uh, last year in twenty-twenty-two, the addition of some positions with ARPA money. So there is ARPA money funding um, a couple, a few positions for the first couple of years. Um, there was, I believe, two poli-, three police officers and a detective. And, um, the human, an additional human resources staff person that were funded through ARPA. So we've been drawing down that ARPA total, um, based on the salaries that were assigned to those hired staff members, um, from that point.
These positions, I, 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 I knew we had funded some, as a matter of fact, that's the only place I believe we funded, uh, wages from ARPA. Do a- and these are not new positions. We are just using ARPA money to backfill already, uh, position, already filled, not filled, but unfilled positions.
That's correct. So there haven't been any new allocations of staff costs against any of the ARPA money in this budget outside of what council approved back in May of twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from council? All right, I have no questions or comments either. So there being no further questions from the public or council, that the record show that this public hearing is now closed and that the time is six forty-nine P M. I'm gonna be messed up by that clock all night long. Okay. So the next step will be at our next regular meeting to approve the budget. There's still time for audience members and council members to investigate, to dig deeper, make comments. Um, so don't slack off in thinking that it's all done. Council members, if you want a deeper view, um, this budget is, I believe, on the website, I think I saw it on the website, or you could make a, an appointment to speak with Ms. Alber, Ms. Harmer, and they would be more than happy to, um, take you all the way down into the deepest, darkest parts of the budget. And I'm certain that that would be true for members of the public as well. So please feel free to ask for an appointment and tear into that and ask for explanations. We'd love for you to understand that. Next item of business is Item B, Yakima County Development Association Pledge. Consider authorizing the city manager to pledge five-year funding to Yakima County Develop Association, Development Association, the cities, at the city council's desired amount. Madam City Manager.
And I apologize, the pledge letter and form did not get added to the packet, at least not the copy I'm looking at. So you'll just have to take my word that those are available. Um, so Yakima County Development, uh, Y C D A has begun their five-year funding campaign, and this is something that they have, um, done every five years for a number of years since they were inceptioned. Y C D A is requesting a five-year pledge of a hundred thousand dollars, which would be twenty thousand dollars per year from the city of Sunnyside. This request is an annual increase of eight thousand dollars. Y C D A has been leading the way to bring new industries to the port of Sunnyside, and it's getting some of our empty industrial buildings, new tenants. And their commitment to Sunnyside's economic future is key to our continued growth. So I support the, um, pledge, but I would like council to be in agreement now. So this, um, currently we're paying them twelve thousand dollars, and that was what was budgeted for the last previous five years. So this would be an annual increase of eight thousand dollars. So I've come to ask for direction.
Council members, questions or comments?
I mean, eight thousand dollars every five years?
No, eight thousand a year for a total of five years. So it's an increase of twenty thousand dollars from what? No, I'm sorry, is it twenty? I did the math and-
I think what, I think what you're trying to say, Ms. Alber, is that we have previously been paying twelve thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
And for the last five years, and what they're, they're requesting is an increase of eight thousand dollars a year for an annual uh, amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I think, uh, I, I think it's money well spent. Although, um, I'm concerned about the, uh, percent jump. I- is it kind of gonna be the same percent for all the cities up and down the valley that are a member of the Y C D A?
Uh, and actually, their twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-eight campaign investors, um, they have Yakima County that is giving less than or up to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So they're almost at a million doll, a half a million dollars. Um, City of Sunnyside, they're obviously asking for the amount that they have. They've asked the port also, um, that amount, and then Yakima Federal Savings alone. And then they have, uh, the what they call crowdfunding division where they're between ten thousand and uh, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine, and that's a a slew of different businesses up and down the valley. So there's a lot of different, uh, economic partners in this. It's not just they're asking the city. They're asking everybody to share the load.
I, I'm sure you don't know, but how many paid employees do they have?
I do not know, but I know as part of this, they want to do an additional hire. That's part of what the money is for. Um, and if you really would like to know, we probably right now are one of their closest contacts. And, um, we have the land, we are getting the infrastructure in, and they are working diligently to fill the port's industrial park. So their goal is to have that done sooner than later.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Hicks.
As of now, who have they brought in or what have they brought into Sunnyside?
So the recent one is Pacific Ag, and that's the, um, digester that takes, um, manure basically and turns it into, uh, natural gas. And that project should be online by the end of next year, I believe. Is that correct, Trevor?
Um, they just submitted information for their SEPA addenda. I think they're getting ready for permits sometime in the near future here. Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's a big one. That's gonna bring a lot of jobs and not, not the poor wage-paying jobs. That'll bring in between sixty and seventy thousand dollar annual income jobs. And there's, there's more, but I signed an N D A, can't, can't say.
And they have about s- six employees. Yeah, maybe, maybe one or two more.
Yeah, Y C D A, I know, has been working diligently, and Sunnyside is on their target list of places to benefit, and they do want to help us in this area. And one of our goals and port's goals is to bring in jobs and not only agriculture jobs, but other, you know, mid and good-paying jobs. And so personally, I find that something worthy of support, um, something that gives our community members access to better-paying jobs, uh, more secure jobs, jobs that have benefits such as insurance and those sorts of things. Um, I like to see that. Um, traditionally, we've had a lot of egg-based jobs, and there's not a lot of benefits that go with those. And so many of those are seasonal that you've got a lot of people who are, you know, spending a good chunk of the year without getting a regular paycheck. So I, I like the, uh, I like the possibilities behind this. So any other questions or comments from council? Do, I think maybe we need to get a number in place here. Do we support this number as a body? Nobody's proposed another number.
Nope, I support it. We always have to look at the future. That's what we're doing.
Okay, so it's seems as if the twenty thousand dollar target is supported by council? No objections to that? All right, what is the desire of council on this item then?
That's just asking for a recommendation.
We have a consider authorizing the city manager's pledge. Five-year funding to Yakima County. Um, the amount is our is the amount that we're willing to support, and then a motion to allow the manager to move forward with this.
I moved to have the city manager do the pledge of the hundred thousand dollars a year, bringing it up to, bringing it up to eight thousand.
A hundred thousand dollars a year, sir?
Huh? No. No.
Twenty thousand dollars a year?
Twenty thousand dollars a year. Okay. Which is eight thousand.
I wanted to be sure on that because that's really generous.
Oh.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion by Council Beeler, second by Council Ripley to authorize the city manager to pledge five-year funding to Yakima County Development Association at the city's desired amount, which has been set at twenty thousand dollars a year. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of this motion? Please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion passes. Item C. Recreation and Conservation Office amended resolution. Consider approving an amended resolution authorizing the city manager to complete the local parks maintenance program applicant authorization and electronic signature form, which allows the city manager to execute the agreement with the Recreation and Conservation Office. Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this over for staff report to Rawl Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, uh, Madam City Manager, Alba. Um, so yes, what this is just considering approving an amended resolution allowing city managers to complete the local parks and maintenance program application authorization electronic signature form, which is just ecology is asking for, um, filling out this form, um, for their database to be updated with the city managers, um, to execute the agreement with the Recreation Conservation Office.
Council members, questions or comments for Mr. Sanchez?
This doesn't change anything from the original meeting that you brought this up in, does it?
No, it just, it, this is just, uh, filling out the, the electronic signature, signature form that wasn't done before. Just requirements that ecology wants.
Okay.
So when, sometime when staff changes, um, it needs to be updated in their system.
Okay, further questions or comments? All right, what is the desire of council on this item? All right, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Bueller, second by Council Hicks to approve an amended re- res- resolution authorizing the city manager to complete the local parks maintenance program applicant authorization and electronic signature form. Which will allow the city manager to execute the agreement with the Recreation and Conservation Office. Debate on this item. None. Okay, my only comment is going to be that this doesn't change anything that we've approved before. Um, it simply fills in a gap that was left behind. So. All right, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The two vote aye, motion passes. Item D, I A F F Insurance for firefighters. For fire employees, correction. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master agreement with I A F F Health and Wellness Trust. To provide insurance benefits for the city of Sunnyside fire employees and their families, Madam City Manager.
So we met with uh Union Representative Heron and um had a discussion on this plan. Um, they were very interested in being a part of a firefighter uh insurance plan, so we uh negotiated. And to help offset the costs of that deductible that they uh mentioned, it is a high deductible plan. Um, the city will contribute fifty dollars a month to a V I A account, and the members will contribute a hundred dollars a month. So when they do have that out-of-pocket expense, they'll have that um available for them to use. Um, this plan includes uh dental vision, and it is very comparable to the current plan that we're under under the Teamsters Association.
Questions or comments for the manager?
Very comparable as in apples to apples or?
There's a few things that are different, but they are nego- very, you know, not a big deal. So it's not like they're all of a sudden going to go to the doctor and and say, oh, wait, you now don't have coverage for this or coverage for that. So we did an analysis of the current plan render, and then this plan to make sure that they were comparable. Um, in most areas, they were very, very close.
Initial cost comparable also?
Yes, yes.
They'll be able to start January first, I believe?
That's correct.
So that means there won't be a gap in insurance coverage, correct?
That's correct. And and we were wanting to expedite this so that they can try to get their um. Information for their cards, because that's usually the biggest issue when you start in a new plan. Is getting your insurance card so you can go fill your prescriptions for the first time in January. So we'll make sure that H R works with um the company. Um, I did. You do this in Grandview when Grandview switched from one insurance carrier to the other. Um, nobody got their cards in January, and we ended up having to issue temporary cards with the bin and the R X number on it. So I've already been through that process, and I know how to navigate it. So I'm very confident that. Um, we'll make sure there's something in place that they have a card or something in hand uh January one.
It's just a one-year.
This will be a master participation agreement, and it's not usually superseded unless there's changes to the plan. So there's really no expiration date on master participation agreements. It's when the city decides that they no longer want to provide this option. So it can go on into infinity and beyond.
Further comments or questions? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second it.
All right, motion by Council Bueller, second by Council Ripley to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master agreement. With I A F F Health and Wellness Trust to provide in- insurance benefits for the city of Sunnyside fire employees and their families. Debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I two vote aye. Motion passes. And thank you to those members of our fire department who diligently did all the research necessary to put this all together, because I know you spent some time on that. All right, item four, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. We have one vacancy on the Community and Economic Development Committee. And for the longest time, we had one applicant, and then I was notified, or I I found my my computer hasn't been working properly for some time. And when I got it back up online, I found an email from a member of the community who. Expressed a great deal of interest in being on this committee as well. And I had the opportunity to meet with that individual this past week, encouraged him to fill out an application, so. I am committed to giving him some time to get that application in. Failing that, the one member who has sub- or the one individual who has submitted an application would be the one who would be appointed, but we'll give him some time to get that filled out. It is a rather extensive application, so. Hopefully, we'll have that ready to go by our next regular meeting. And I don't know of any other vacancies. I did meet with the manager today, and we're going to going to go over along with the rules committee, and we're going to take a look at the. Um, boards and commissions that we have and take a look at terms and see where they are expiring and what each member wishes to do with that. So uh be ready for that. That will be coming before the rules committee, so those of you who are on that committee be prepared for that coming up here before the end of the year. Or maybe the first of January if we can't get it done before then. All right, council request status report, Madam City Manager.
Um, so before I begin uh speaking about the council request status report, I wanted to. Give you a s- a slight update on what the plan is for a lot of the items on this list. And for staff, um in early January, I plan to have a staff retreat. And get the staff together and really work hard on getting these items either cleared or in the process. And making sure that we have them on our radar. We will be going over past projects that haven't been finished in twenty twenty-three. And then um moving forward our plan to execute and make sure that these items get done and off of our list, because some of them have been on here since twenty eighteen. Um, and then hopefully in February uh or March, I'm not sure how fast we'll be able to get to it. We'll have a joint city council leadership team meeting where we can then give you what our expected results for twenty twenty-four will be. So that you can have a a list and an idea of uh where the vision is of the staff and then, you know. Refine it with us and make sure we're all on the same page. So with that, um, water tower, we have um this on our project list. We've met with Stephanie Ray. With H L A, and she believes the last bid that we had was from the city of Pasco. It's been about two years. Um, the, there's like two people that paint water towers in the Northwest. And so uh being very specialized, she recommended that we go ahead and go out for the R F T bit, then contact them for, you know, making sure they know we're out there. Um, we did look at maybe wrapping the tower with a basically a sticker is what it ends up being. Um, we were told that that's not always a good option, that usually within a few years they peel off and you have to start over again, and they look very unsightly. So um we're going to put into the budget enough for um painting it and actually doing that. Um, Chase Reef, um who is on the Arts Commission, did reach out to me this week. And he is very much understanding that he doesn't have the ability to do the painting himself, but he wants to be a part of the design. So I have given him Stephanie Ray's um contact information. He um emailed me today. He's going to start working on that. So. Um, we have a plan, um, we have somewhere to go forward, so we're hoping in the spring that can get finished up. The noise ordinance, um, again, this is something that we really need to sit down uh with staff and everybody go over. Um, changes that need to happen to that ordinance. Um, it's not much that we really have going forward with it on it right now. Um, code enforcement, um, there have been some very active code enforcement cases that have been. Um, very well received by some neighborhoods. Um, and I will let uh Mr. Martin elaborate on a a demolition that was done on Ninth. And then uh some of the other things that you guys have been doing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this year, I think most of you are aware, but um we've been pretty, we've been, you know, pretty aggressive this year. Uh, we want to kind of show that we mean business when we say we want something done. We really want something done. We want some follow-through. Um, as you know, there's the house on Ninth that I I've talked to you all about. That one's gone now. There's a house on Harrison that is gone. And then um we just condemned a house at nine twelve South Eleventh Street. Um, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that one, but that one's just off of Lincoln and Eleventh, just up the street a little bit. Um, pretty rough shape, uh everything that was in there. Um, so yeah, we 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 had a, after being in there, after seeing the condition of that house, we had to condemn the house and. I think as of pretty recently, the owner is finally, finally they've haven't been able to get it secured. It's finally secured. And I think they're going to move on with either removing the house or removing it to to sell it, or uh somebody who's maybe looking to purchase it is looking at putting up some multi. Multi or some dup- duplex or something like that. So um it's hopefully the lots uh are going to see a better life than your future. So that's that's what we're hoping for. Um, so yeah, we've been, we've been pretty aggressive on it. We have about half a dozen more houses that we're going to be looking at before the end of the year. Um, some people, uh, other one, the other one over by Walmart's across across from Walmart on Lincoln. I think they're just about done uh repairing that house. We were pretty. Um, they gave that guy a phone call and he was up here for the next day, so that was pretty nice to see some movement there. Um, so yeah, we we're. We're trying to get people to to move and and either if they don't want it, sell it, sell it to somebody who who is interested and actually fixing it and having running water. So that's. That's kind of the boat we're in right now. So we're we've been been pretty aggressive with it lately, yeah.
And then the fireworks ordinance, this continues to be something that um our fire department uh needs to work on. We have missed the window for making changes for this next year. They have to be done a year in advance, so. Um, we'll be looking at making changes to twenty twenty-five, and I think after council is convened and we have. Um, you know, people on the Public Safety Committee will start bringing that through the Public Safety Committee forum first and work on it in there. That's all I have on that one.
All right, council members, does anybody have anything they wish to add to the uh council request status report? Mr. Bueller?
Coming in the driveway here. Those blue streetlights, now that we're in daylight savings time. It's hard to even see the driveway coming in off of Y V H, um, and there's still blue lights down Schoon Road over here. Where are we at on that? We're going on two years now.
Well, uh, if you recall, this is a nationwide problem with a recall of those, that brand of lights. And so we're just waiting in line with every other city that had them installed. So i- it'll just be a matter of whenever they contact us, say, okay, we're ready to go start installing lights. Um, I did before Shane Fisher left, ask him to put reflectors on the curb over here because I had the same issue coming in. Um, because I think we take the same path in here. And so that means something that maybe he didn't get passed on to Raul, but we can certainly put some curbing reflecting. Stuff on that corner, because it is really bad. It's hard to see, especially if your eyesight's not great. So we'll put that on a list.
You.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that I I did speak with the street department supervisor. And um have him go out and make a, get a list of all the, now that it's darker in the morning, to get a list of all the poles. So that we can submit it to P P N L and see if we can get them moving a little bit faster.
Thank you.
Any other items that need to be added to this report?
I didn't want this item added. I just wanted clarification.
Just wanted to make sure that it's.
Okay.
All right, well, if you do think of something, please notify the manager, myself, we can get that put on there. All right, next item, other reports, announcements, and or questions by council. And as usual, I'm going to start at the far end, and Mr. Bueller.
Uh, went to the Walmart grand reopening. It's beautiful in there, and they. They wasted nothing putting on a big event. It was really nice going out there, seeing a lot of people out there. That's all I have.
Mr. Hicks?
Uh, just to follow up on the Spalding being a one-way.
Yeah, so we went out there and took a look and see, I mean, it is a narrow street to begin with, um, but some of the stuff that I think was also uh. Making it worse is the the shrubbery and some of the tree shrub stuff that was along the side of the street that I think cars are also avoiding. In order and creating them to go to the other side. So I had the street department go out there and and take everything out that was in the right of way. As far as just some of the wild stuff that was growing there. At the corner of um Spalding and Rosier, there is a big shrub that's kind of encroached into the uh beyond the stop sign. So um they did give a notice to the homeowner to trim that bush back and see that also will help. Um, course, that's a fourteen-day notice, so we're waiting for that before then we can go in there and.
Legally, it's wide enough for two lanes?
Well, now, I mean, it's only, it's it's like twenty feet in some sections, but there's also a drop-off. So in order to do that, we would have to obviously go through a process in order to see. Um, what we can do in order to widen that. Obviously, there's going to be pretty good expense in order to. To see how far our right of way is, and obviously it's a drop-off on the south side of Spalding. So that's going to create some sort of a retaining wall that need to be in there in order to widen that street out to the full dimensions that. A typical street would be.
If you guys want to keep it two lane.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think Mr. Hicks is correct. I believe that one time council did vote to make that a one-way street. But for whatever reason, it was never implemented, so.
Council took the action, Mr. Mayor, but the staff did not execute. Um, for whatever reason.
Okay, so we'll look up the council date for that and find out uh what where we're at in the process.
The vote was prior to my time on council, so it was prior to two, to March of two thousand thirteen.
Oh, wow, okay. Well, that might be another way, yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, Ms. Ripley.
I also went to the Walmart grand reopening. It was very nice. It was. It was very nice. They had some sales in there. It's a woman thing.
Mr. Farmer?
I'll pass.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll pass tonight, too. Thank you, Mr.
Well, I had the privilege of attending the uh the Walmart's grand reopening as well, even had the opportunity to say a few words. And um I think it was very well done. I appreciated all the effort that they put into that. The store is is nice, it's bright, it's clean, it was really impressive. Um, the festivities, I mean, from the high school band to the mariachis, to the free food and snacks, all that kind of stuff. It was. It was a lot of fun. Everybody there was having a lot of fun. Employees were obviously quite excited. They'd been through quite a lot over the last few months. So it was uh, it was nice to be able to be there and to participate in that. And then on Saturday with the Veterans Day activities down at the uh. Memorial there on Ninth Street, uh, we we had to put up with a little bit of wind. Uh, the podium threatened to blow across the the street a couple of different times, and different things were blowing away, and we had some. Brave individuals hanging on to those flags for dear life. But uh, but we got it done. We were able to recognize um Senator Honeyford. Uh, after his retirement and his many years of service and the many good things that he did for Sunnyside. Um, including the work on the uh Veterans Memorial Park there. So and also um the Sunnyside. Group received the title to that uh Veterans Park that is right next to uh Yakima Federal Bank there, so they they were given that chunk of land, which was also. Something I thought that was really cool. I'm very grateful to uh Yakima Federal for being willing to do that. So that was well done. I enjoyed that greatly. So, and I didn't have to give a speech to that one, and that was kind of nice, too. I just had to read off a list. All right, upcoming council meetings, Madam City Manager.
And Clerk Rentria.
Coming up November twenty-seventh, regular meeting, there's a second public hearing for the twenty twenty-four budget. And then ad- adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget and the classification and compensation schedule. And action on the twenty twenty-four official newspaper. December fourth is a workshop, and there will be two items, discussion of fee schedule, change from ordinance to resolution, and updates to rates for twenty twenty-four. And updates the stormwater section of the S M C thirteen point thirty point zero seven zero. December eleventh, regular meeting. Final budget amendment for twenty twenty-three, approve updated personnel policy, update Sunnyside municipal code thirteen. Point thirty point zero seven zero, stormwater service charges. And pass updated fee schedule for twenty twenty-four.
All right, council members, if there's anything that needs to be added to the budget, please talk to uh either myself or the manager, and we can make those additions. I do want to uh ask council if uh. Well, I might not so much their opinion on this, but just if there's any objection to this, we have had after this election, uh, we're looking at a significant change in council. And I believe typically the last two years anyway, we have done our city manager evaluation in January or February. I feel that is unfair to ask our incoming council members. Who, especially those three who have not had much experience yet working with our manager, then to participate in the first few weeks of their. Their time in office and an evaluation of our manager for the last year. So I'm wondering how council feels about during the workshop meeting in December. that we would be able to go into executive session for a while and do the evaluation on the manager with this current council. And then in our first meet, our first regular meeting, which would be the next week, that we would be able to present and, um, present that to the public. Is there any objection to that? Deputy Mayor, do you have any objection to that or comment to add?
Uh, no objection, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I would wholeheartedly support that. Obviously I would like to be involved in the evaluation of the manager.
Okay. So we will add that to those two agendas. Mr. Beeler?
I need to request an excused absence for the 27th. I'll be in Seattle. The wife's having a procedure done. And I don't know what time we'll be getting back.
Okay. Is there any objection to Mr. Beeler's absent on the 27th? All right, sir. You are excused from that meeting and I hope your wife's procedure goes well.
Thank you.
And safe travels, because this time of year it can always be dicey. All right. So we've got those items added to the agenda for December. And again, any other items that need to be added, please talk to myself or the manager regarding that. Items from department heads, Madam City Manager?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, if you could have staffs, um, send out the previous evaluation and the rubric and so forth and so on. So council has that, uh, way in advance.
You know, I thought of that as I was driving here from my house and then it totally slipped my mind as I was talking about it. So thank you, sir, for the reminder. So yeah, let's get that, uh, previous evaluation and then the rubric sent out to each of us to, uh, hopefully have that filled out before we get to the meeting that we can discuss and make changes. But it's always great when it can be filled out before we actually get to the meeting and we thought it through. So, all right. Madam City Manager?
So tonight I handed out, um, cards that are laminated or I don't know what you could call them, piece of papers that are laminated. I wanted to get in your hands, um, every single contact I could for the city. These are direct phone lines so that when you have a citizen that says, you know, I tried to call this number, I can't get through, I, I want you to be able to be empowered to say, well, let me get this out of my dash in my car. I've got the phone number. Here's who you need to call directly. Um, I think it's really important that, um, we have this in your hands now, especially for the members that are going off council because you're still going to have people that come to you and ask questions. So I want you to feel empowered to give out those phone numbers as needed. Um, and know that, um, you know, somebody might not be sitting right at their desk. So, you know, make sure they tell, you tell the citizen, leave a voicemail if you don't hear from them. Um, and then if they don't hear from them after a while, then empower them to call me. Because I, I have my cell phone, my desk phone forwarded to my cell phone. So I pretty much answer anywhere. I answered a phone call today when I was at Catalina's. So, I mean, but they thought I was in my office. So I want to let you know that that was something that I really wanted you to have. Also I passed out cards, um, for the festival of trees. Um, I didn't give them into any of council, but I wanted to remind council that the city has purchased two tables and you're invited to come as a council member. Um, it is going to be December 9th at the community center starting at six o'clock. So if you'd let Jackie know, um, if you're wanting to go and then we'll get you a ticket. Um, other than that, our festivities for Christmas are coming up on, um, Friday, December. Sorry, I gotta look at the calendar. Friday, December 1st, actually, we're, um, going to have the, um, children's, uh, lighted parade. And at the start of that, we're going to have the mayor and any council members that want to do the lighting of the downtown. And so this year we have, um, eight positions because we have additional lights. So we're going to need eight people ready to go one, two, three and plug in. So if you'd like to have that duty, just let me know. Um, the next day is the lighted farm implement parade and the downtown, um, market. Also I believe there is a bazaar at the mall with the, um, seroptimus. Um, and then on Sunday, I don't believe we have any festivities, but then the next weekend we've moved the festival of trees stuff so that it's not all compact. And I can actually attend the children's parade for the first time in about 10 years, well, nine years. So, um, I, I think this is going to be really good for our city. Um, and the, we've partnered this year with Austria and we've been having weekly meetings. Um, the funds from the festival of trees will go for the wings. I want to say wings of sport. I don't know. It's anyway, it's going to the cancer, um, house they've just done. So it'll go to that. Um, and then, oh, wings of love is what it's called. And then the other, um, portion is going to go towards our animal shelter. So we're hoping to start really pushing, raising funds for that animal shelter. Um, already have received donations from it. This, the community is really, really supportive of this. So, uh, just want to let you guys know, I've been out, uh, visiting businesses, soliciting, uh, you know, soliciting funds and making sure people want to come. So that's what I have. Um, I am going to take some vacation time next week. Uh, since it's the holiday, I'll be taking, um, probably Tuesday and Wednesday off. Um, but I will be in town. I'm not going out of town. I'll have my phone. Um, but I will be taking some time out of the office and baking cookies and all that fun stuff you do at Thanksgiving. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Warner.
Ms. Warner?
Thank you very much. Uh, I just have one thing to discuss today and I did send you an email on it. Um, the federal portion of our state audit has been completed. Um, they didn't find any issues with any of our handling of federal funds. Um, and so we're now moving on to the next portion. There were a couple of minor corrections that we had to make, um, but no, um, no issues there, which I know the council will be happy to hear because of all of the things that we've heard, um, specifically about federal funds potentially earlier this year. So, um, that's good to go. The next portion will be the accountability and the financial statement audit. And so we expect that to begin in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you. Uh, on sixth street, as you guys can see, it's been pretty much done. Um, the only thing we're waiting for is an electrical panel that did not meet the PPNL requirements for all the lighting. So therefore they're replacing it. So we're waiting for that to come in so we can get that, um, buttoned up. Um, the other thing is that we've had our janitorial, um, positions filled. They started, uh, November 1st. So that was good. So that's all I have.
So I asked you a question the last time about Midvale Road and the patchwork that's done. And, and the reason I'm concerned about that, because I know those rough edges are going to break and lead to potholes real quick. Is there any movement on that or?
Yeah. So we, we talked to them. So there was some sections were cold patched because then they were going to come back and dig it up again and do some services. So those were really rough. But tomorrow we're doing a walkthrough so that we can go over all those sections that are not to our standards. So we'll be going over that. But we did talk to them.
Okay. Cause they did such a nice job rebuilding that road. I'd hate to see it get torn up and full of potholes so quick. And so.
Yeah. So no, we're going through a walkthrough tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Martin?
Okay. So just some of the October numbers for code enforcement, there were, um, 31 violations logged. A third, 25 have been closed and six of them are still open, one of those being the case at ninth, the, the house at nine, 12 South 11th Street. Uh, let's see here. Um, you're going to have a handful of annexations coming up and some final annexation procedures coming up in December. So expect to see those from me. And then I've been working in collaboration with, um, Chief Halbrick. Um, we're going to be, we're expecting, we're hoping, crossing our fingers and everything, um, to begin fire inspections, uh, starting January 1. So I'm going to send out a bunch of notices and make sure that the community knows that fire inspections will be resuming. So if there's any questions that come up with that, you can direct them my way. So I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Riley, do you have anything to report?
At this time, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions for Mr. Riley?
Ms. Rintria?
I already sent the city manager evaluation materials, um, to your city emails. So if you need anything else, just let me know. And that's all we have.
All right. I did get one comment that earlier today, actually I got it more than once. Um, apparently there's been a bit of a tagging spree up on Grandview Avenue in the last couple of days. Um, specifically last night, just after midnight. If it's happening there, it's happening in other places of town too. Let's, uh, hopefully we can get ahead of these guys and, and stop it before it becomes a big thing. I know the city property up there, the water tower got hit as well. So.
Yeah, we were, uh, the month of, I'm going to, the month of October was a kind of actually a lull. And so we hadn't let, um, logged as many, um, graffiti cases. But yeah, I, I, when I came in, I saw a bunch of it on some buildings downtown and like, okay, well, we're, okay, it looks like they're back right now. So.
Yeah. Well, we had one truck in my neighborhood and one fence and both the truck owner and the, and the homeowner managed to get it off. They sanded the fence and cleaned the truck, but still they were quite upset that it's happening. And this is not something that anybody in town wants to have. I don't care where they live. I don't care who they are. They do not want their vehicles spray painted unless they do it themselves. So just a heads up in case you hadn't heard about it. I'm sure you had, but, uh, make sure you knew. All right. So there being no further business to come before council and without objection, adjourn this meeting at seven thirty one.